Welcome to the December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council meeting, six thirty City Council chambers. I'll start with the prayer. Dear God, today is such an opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified, may we continue the legacy of our founders, may we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Slute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchier.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Eleven present.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Matthew Samuel Fitzpatrick, age fifty-three, formerly of Lowell. Matt was the loving husband of Jennifer McAllister Fitzpatrick, who survives him. Matt was the only son of attorney Joseph and Mary Ellen Pollard Fitzpatrick. Matt was the only grandson of former Lowell mayor Samuel S. Pollard and his grandmother Helen. Matt was a graduate of Saint John's Prep School in Danvers, then graduated from the Carroll School of Management at Boston College and the Certified Financial Planner Program at Boston University. He began his career at North Cross and Leighton Insurance in Lowell and was associated in financial management at Enterprise Bank and later at New England Wealth Management, Inc. Matt was involved with many local nonprofits, including the Young Professionals of Greater Lowell and the Pollard Memorial Library, where he established a visiting authors program. Most recently, he was managing director of Saltworks Energy, Inc. Since his early days in school, Matt enjoyed writing, and in the past eight years, he was the author of four books. An avid boat boatsman, Matt was a licensed pilot as well, and he was happiest boating along the Massachusetts coast, teaching boating and water safety. In addition to his wife and parents, Matt was the proud father of his two daughters, Kaylee Anne and Nicole Erin Fitzpatrick, and their mother Elaine Berber Fitzpatrick. He is also survived by his sister Erin Fitzpatrick Aiken and his two nephews Gabriel and Eugene. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Elektra Jean Letty Perigian, beloved wife of Oscar Perigian, who passed away in two thousand and sixteen. She was a lifelong resident of Lowell and graduated from Lowell High School with the class of nineteen forty-nine. She went on to graduate from Lowell State Teachers College, now the University of Mass at Lowell, with a Bachelor of Arts degree in nineteen fifty-eight and subsequently earned her Masters of Education. She spent most of her career as a teacher in Lowell, focusing on remedial reading and special education. She retired in nineteen ninety-five, but continued as a substitute teacher and tutor until two thousand and sixteen. Letty's students and friends were very important to her. Letty resided in Belvedere and was a member of the Holy Trinity Greek Church in Lowell. Her legacy is that of a loving mother, a grandmother, and respected teacher. In her young years, she enjoyed golf and was a former member of the Long Meadow Golf Club. Letty is survived by her two sons Theodore Perigian and wife Corinne and Mark Perigian, her three grandchildren Michael, Matthew, and Rachel Perigian. We offer our sympathy to her family, relatives, friends, and her many former students. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber to all the people who passed away since our last city council meeting. They will be truly missed. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Dear Counselor, any others? Mr. Clerk, please dock in the chambers. May they rest in peace. On to Mayor's business, two point one, communication to promote Zuba's patient in motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Dakota, second by Counselor Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. And then tonight, actually leaving us tomorrow, but her last meeting tonight is Carol Magna, Caroline Magna. Caroline, come on up. Caroline is a UMass Lowell Journalism major, and she's been interning in the mayor's office for this past semester. She's been critical to the help of Arastus and the staff for the mayor's office. She's done a lot of work. All the beautiful speeches that you see that I put out, Caroline edits all of them, so is there any run-on sentences or going to the wrong spot. Right, yeah. So if you start seeing misspelled words starting in January first, you know it's not me. But I just wanted to thank Caroline and wish her the best of luck in the second semester of her senior year, so best of luck. Two point two, another communication we have, Lowell Folk Festival Ad Hoc Subcommittee. We have with us this evening our case director, Mr. Crew. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're very excited to explore the possibility of starting an ad hoc subcommittee specifically to focus on the Folk Festival, and I'm really delighted that Art Suckliff and Lee Valisis are here tonight as well. We see this really as an opportunity to partner directly with the Folk Festival and how we move forward and set the festival up for another fantastic forty years of success in Lowell. Looking forward to how we continue to work together and make sure the event stays really successful, and looking forward to working with the council on how we do that.
Great, great. So we need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Robinson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Anybody interested in doing so, please reach out to the mayor's office, and we'll forward them to Peter and get started, so thank you very much. Section three, City Cork, three point one, made to the nonprofit organization Subcommittee December third, and City Council regular meeting December third for acceptance, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Getchier, second by Counselor Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're not yet till seven o'clock for the public hearings, so we can go on to the City Council motions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we start the motions, I know we have a lot of line items. Can we take two items out of order before we start the motions, please? I request you take motions six point three and six point six out of order.
Motion by Counselor Chow to take six three and...
You can't do it.
Right. No, seven o'clock public hearings.
About the... Six point three under the...
Six point three and four.
We've done half the motions by now.
Okay. It's a vote.
It's a public hearing, ain't it?
You all set, Counselor?
Yeah, I'm set. Thank you.
Five point one, Counselor Janess. Request the city manager to have the law department draft a homeroom petition to prevent the forced imposition of broker's fees on renters within the city of Lowell, seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was something that came up last week. There was a WGBH story that Boston, Cambridge, and Somerville City councils are looking to do this. Basically, what we're looking to do is to end the imposition of forced broker's fees onto renters. So basically, this is something that happens quite frequently in Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, happens less frequently here, but someone did send me a listing of a two-bedroom townhouse in the Highlands recently. Three thousand dollars a month rent. In order to move in, you need to provide first, security, and three thousand dollars broker fee. This is a broker that's hired by the landlord, it's not hired by the renter, and these costs are just being passed on to the renter, and it makes it really difficult for folks to be able to afford to move into places. Massachusetts is the only state in the country where this is a common practice. It used to happen in the city of New York. They recently moved to ban it, so if Boston, Cambridge, and Somerville all were to move forward with banning it via a homeroom petition, as they're trying to, it would leave Lowell as one of the largest cities in the country where somebody could do this. I don't think it's fair to the Lowell residents. I don't think it's fair, particularly in a city which is so rent burdened already and has such a high population of renters. So anything that we can do to ease this burden to folks looking to move in, I think, is a benefit here. So I would ask that the city manager have the law department take a look at what Boston, Cambridge, and Somerville are looking to move forward with here, and bring something to us that we can do, something very similar or the same here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good motion by Counselor Janess. I think that the rents, expensive as it is now, to add a broker fee to it, really hurt renter, hurt resident of Lowell. I mean, if Cambridge, Boston, and Somerville do it, we should join hand with them, put a stop to this as well, so that, you know, landlord cannot impose a broker fee on the renter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I saw this motion, my first reaction is a real estate broker professional. I was thinking of, in the greater Lowell area, the landlord still paid a commission to the buyers, to the renters' agent. It's a one-month rent divided by two, so half-month rent to the broker representing the renter and half-month rent representing the listing agent. So in, like Counselor Janess said, in Boston area, usually the brokers representing the renter, the renter has to pay that fees to the brokers who bring them to see the apartment. I understand the sentiment that will add additional burden on to the renter because the renter now represented by a renter agent, so. The biggest concern for me, not just the renting part, but the listing part, and I'm hoping that the law department can take a look regarding the renting fees and all that. I spoke with Counselor Janess a bit before the meeting, and what he brought to me, it's looked like a private landlord, private landlords do the, try, a private landlord own their own properties, so to try to take, to get more money from the renter, so. The big pictures, I hope the law department reach out to those cities in town and see what they can do, and I'm not sure if we can. Regulating the private industry transaction only if the property is something financed by the city of Lowell, things like that, so I'm not sure if the solicitor have any comments on the matters. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Sluslo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this particular issue, I noticed, I had read the same article that Counselor Janess had, and it had been discussed in that article that, at least, it has been put forward that a homeroom petition might be the vehicle to do something like this. I'm not convinced as of yet that a local ordinance wouldn't satisfy getting rid of something like that. I need to do more research on it. Of course, you know, I did a quick look through the statute and the regulatory sections that apply to real estate brokers and salesmen. It feels like something that an ordinance would satisfy without actually changing the statute at the legislative level, but I'll have to do more research on that, and I can bring that back to you as to the most appropriate way to go forward.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Our motion on the floor by Counselor Chow, second by Counselor Noon, to take six five and six six out of order. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Six five... Is a communication for resignationals from the planning board, and a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Yem. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Six point six is a communication for appointments to various boards and commissions. We have three this evening. We have Tel Sa, Planning Board, term will expire on September first, two thousand and twenty-nine. Javerson Cardoso Silva, I hope I get that right, Planning Board, which will expire on September first, two thousand and twenty-seven, and Victoria Voice on Sustainability Council, whose term will expire on twelve ten twenty-six. These appointments do need a roll call, so motion to adopt by Counselor Getchier, second by Counselor Noon. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Great, we do have some of those volunteers have pushed their precious time and energy to serve. Still, do you want to start off? Go ahead. How you doing, everyone?
Hi.
Sukkari. I know a few people here. Sean. Great, thank you very much for serving. Thank you.
Welcome, Silva.
Mr. Sa.
Thank you. I appreciate you have me work for the city, help the city. I've done elections commission for fifteen years, and I'm glad to be back here, see what I can do to help the city. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, is Victoria here this evening? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Back to the motions, five point two, Counselor Yem. To request the city manager to have the appropriate department implement the use of solar-driven LED streetlights, as stated in a two thousand and seventeen Lowell City Council Resolution, using one hundred percent renewable energy by two thousand and thirty-five, seconded by Counselor Noon, Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the motion stated, that in two thousand and seventeen, the city council passed a resolution urging legislature to do everything in its power, bringing Massachusetts closer to one hundred percent renewable energy by two thousand and thirty-five. The resolution goes on to say that the city of Lowell committed to the promotion of clean energy, reduce fossil fuel use, including but not limit to municipal solar project and converting to LED street lighting. In two thousand and twenty-one, UMass Lowell installed eight solar lampposts along Northern Canal Overlook, funded in part by ten thousand grand from the Lowell Green Community Partnership, and is in a line between the UMass Lowell and the city. I urge the city Sustainable Department to work, continue working with the UMass Risk Institute to expand the solar-driven streetlight to all municipal building and the street. The city of Keene, New Hampshire, installed twenty-six solar streetlight in two thousand and twenty-three. We talked about the project that the city of Lowell involve, will be involved in becoming frontrunners with the UN. Similar, UN has a framework convention on climate change. It's called UNFCC, Focus on Climate Change, to keep the global average temperature in the possibility of a one point five degrees Celsius or thirty-four point seven Fahrenheit. So this UN group also promoting the solar-driven LED streetlight, and we may want to take a look at that and incorporate that in to our application to be the forefront runners coming up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Five point three, Counselor Scott. Request city manager to have the transportation engineer power a three-way stop at the intersection of Hollis Street and North Barrecker Road, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Scott.
I was going to ask you to bundle. Five, three, two, five, eight.
Awesome, by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Mercier. Everybody can hit it for once. So five three's already been read. Five four, Counselor Scott. Request city manager to have transportation engineer assess the feasibility of prohibiting through truck traffic on Hollis Street. Five forty-five, Counselor Scott. Request city manager to direct the transportation engineer to review and report the process of adding traffic signals at four ninety-five, Whoburn Street, off and on ramps, implementing a three-way stop or traffic signals at the Bowles Street and Long Street intersection, and installing speed bumps on Andrews, Barrecker, Main, Bowden, and Strongquist Street. Five point six, Counselor Scott. Request city manager to have the transportation engineer evaluate the feasibility of restricting through traffic on Hollis Street in both directions during the times of seven AM to nine AM and two PM to six PM. And five point seven, Counselor Scott. Request city manager to conduct a trial installation of speed tables on Hollis Street. And five point eight, Counselor Scott. Request the city manager to direct the traffic engineer to explore adding stop signs at streets intersecting with Lowell Street and consider installing speed humps or chicanes on Barrecker and Hollis Street. Ms. Altman, you should probably get yourself an ADU over on North Barrecker Street over the next six months. Counselor Scott, go ahead.
Get ready for them. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I never had that many seconds that fast before, so. I put these motions back on, I won't believe, but the point, I've sent over twenty-nine pages of emails to the city manager, the traffic engineer, et cetera, with issues around Hollis Street, North Barrecker Road, whatever, Christmas Street. They came from neighborhood meeting complaints over and over again, from resident calls. It's the area that I get more complaints and concerns about than any other area in my district, only second to, well, you know, the most. So we still don't have sidewalks, we still don't have speed bumps, we still don't have a traffic study done around four ninety-five traffic lights, so I'm bringing them forward, asking again. I know the last study done of the Whoburn Street corridor that I could find from NEMCOG was in two thousand and nine. They recommended sidewalks for the area, two sets of traffic lights, left-turn lanes. So I guess the only thing I would ask right now is to make a motion requesting that the traffic engineer reach out to NEMCOG to start a new traffic study around the Whoburn Street corridor. Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Getchier, Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, I spent about a half an hour on Hollis Street parked, and in that half-hour span, I counted eighty-seven cars, and I would imagine at least twenty of them were going over forty miles an hour. If there's ever a street in this city that needs speed humps, Hollis Street is number one on the list right now, without a doubt. I couldn't believe how much traffic, not to mention the number of cars that had driveways but were still cars parked on the street, which made it very difficult for two guys to go at once through. So I'm right there with Counselor Scott. I believe permanent speed hump should be installed sometime in the spring or summer. I'm sure Ms. Altman is already on that, but there's no doubt about it, and I'm also in favor of the three-way stop at Bill Recker at Hollis. Thank you.
Counselor Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. It's disheartening to see that you have to refile motions and try to get it going when we know developments are going in these areas, and we had one development just at the up, on the on-ramp to four ninety-five before, and it was a major topic there, and it just wasn't done, and now here we are again. And you hear people who don't live in the neighborhood tell you how there's no traffic in the neighborhood, and then you hear counselors come in here and say how there's major traffic in the area. So I think that this study would be advantageous to all of us. I have no reason not to believe the people who live on the street, but I thank Counselor Scott for refiling them, because I think it's important that we refile these things and try to get them in a timely manner, because there's a major effect over there. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier. Counselor Noon, I apologize. Counselor Noon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Scott, for filing the motions. I think this concern is valid. I think the issues of traffic, sidewalk, and speed hump is throughout the city of Lowell. You know, I know that we just had a Transportation Subcommittee meeting earlier. You know, it's Ms. Altman talking about Boston, it took them ten year to install speed hump throughout the city, so she's assured us that it won't take the city of Lowell ten year. And I think it's true that, you know, learning that the temporary speed hump, it's cost more than the permanent, so I would suggest that we do the permanent, because it's cheaper. And also, I suggest that in addition to what Counselor Scott talking about, speed study, that we ought to enforce, try to enforce in that area and see what happened in terms of, because we have twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, so speed enforcement there and see, just for a week or so, and see what happened. Maybe that probably helped a little bit to deter people from slowing down a little bit. So I think it's valid to really look into this, because they've been neglected for some time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to the traffic engineer, Mr. Manager. We saw this in Centerville too, and I think something that comes up repeatedly with development projects especially. I would say the development projects kind of shine a light on situations like this where traffic is a major problem in some neighborhoods. You get a project that's slated, so now it's like the residents are up in arms saying, you know, we have this problem existing, and this is just going to kind of, you know, expand on what we've already been dealing with. I've seen over in Centerville where the neighborhood had been, you know, and they were right, inundated with parked vehicles and the traffic was a problem. A development project gets slated, they hire a company to come in or whoever to do a traffic study allegedly, and it comes back saying, oh, there's minimal impact to the neighborhood based on what we've seen. But, I mean, I think if we listen to our residents that live in these neighborhoods, they know. They, I mean, this is their backyards, and I think we see this happen a lot. I think that these projects that are slated, I don't know, is there a mechanism for the city themselves to review? So when you have a project planned in an area, and if that developer has a private company coming to do a traffic study, if the city knows otherwise, or counselors are bringing, saying otherwise, is there a mechanism that we can kind of verify on our own before that project moves forward?
Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Yes, Counselor, that's the traffic engineer. She would be looking at that data to ensure that it was collected appropriately and then move forward, or not move forward.
So in that process, basically, our traffic engineer would kind of have the final yea or nay on whether or not the proposed project is going to be negatively impactful on that neighborhood?
Ms. Altman.
Hello. So when a development project comes in that's a suitable size that needs major project review by the planning board, then they will prepare a traffic impact analysis, and that's basically one of the things that I did in my private career for twenty years, was review these and prepare these. So I do review them and make sure that they're prepared in a professional manner in accordance with national transportation standards. So if there are recommendations that I can make that for traffic improvements or studies or additional sidewalk or crosswalks or things like that, I do make those recommendations, but it's ultimately up to the boards to approve a project like that.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank...
I'd like to thank Council Scott for bringing these forward again. But I did want people to know that this stuff is happening, and there is motion happening on these. Earlier in the Transportation Subcommittee that my colleague, Council Dakota, referenced, and Council Noon as well, Ms. Altman told us that Hollis Street is one of her hotspots, and she plans on having speed humps installed there in the spring. So I just don't want anyone to think that this isn't happening, or the city's been ignoring it. This work has been going, and it is coming in the spring. And I just think it's important that we put that out there. Thank you.
Senator Blanda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to belabor the issue. My colleagues made some great points tonight, but, you know, some, to address Hollis Street has been long overdue. I do appreciate Council Scott's hard work and refiling of all these motions, but, you know, if I can just say a few points that, you know, we repaved Draper Street in my district, and we did permanent speed humps, and my constituents are very, very pleased. But the permanent ones require the street to be in a fairly decent condition to take, you know, to install permanent speed humps. So maybe perhaps we can consider some localized paving. We do approximately 40 yards, and that speed hum can then be applied to the street. But, you know, that's just one avenue, but Mr. Mayor threw you to the manager. And also, Mr. Manager, as we spoke to before, and just tonight on the, previously on the Subcommittee, the temporary speed humps were a big hit, to say the least, as you know. So please consider that with any extra finances we may have, just ask if you're consideration. This would be a good thing to put, any free cash we may have towards this to address speeding throughout the whole city, in particular Hollis Street. So that's another avenue, so we want you to look at everything, because many of our streets are cut-throughs to highways, in this case Hollis Street. You've got the commuter rail down the street, so it's a very busy street, but there are solutions on the way for those residents. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilors, as you know, Billings Street took place this summer, and it was a huge success. So I think since that time, we've put in a number of traffic calming measures, whether you call them speed humps or shrinking the roadway. It's going to be the intent of the administration to ask the council if and when we have free cash available within the next couple of months to put some of that aside for not only this year, but for the following year. So Ms. Altman is in the process and has been in the process. We had a meeting today in regards to revenues, or additional revenues going towards our horizontal construction, which I think that people are really starting to see, a major change that the city has been experiencing because of this council and the council before it, with the amount of money we're spending, probably in and around over the past three years, close to $30 million by the end of this year. And that's a big thanks to this council for moving forward on that. But when free cash is brought forward in the coming months, it's going to be, once again, the intention of the administration to ask the council to put X dollars aside to ensure that not only the remainder of what would be 2025, but then again into 2026, to continue to do this. We have found, as Council has just stated a moment ago, we have found that there are no complaints. We haven't had a complaint about installing these speed humps or traffic mitigation throughout the city. And I think it's extremely important that, Ms. Altman, we had this, once again, had this discussion today, that we'll be putting forth what are the criteria for this. Not every street would be a candidate, but what the criteria is and how to assist our police department, who obviously can't be everywhere all the time, to slow people down who are not doing, obviously, the right thing. But it's an exciting time, and I thank you, Councilor, for bringing it up, and I thank you, Councilor, for bringing this up. We will be looking at that whole corridor through Mass DOT to find out how we can tackle that area and make it safer for the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Senator Robinson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, and maybe the traffic engineer. Just a couple of quick questions. I know Centerville's a little bit different. We're doing the CSO work, so permanent installations are kind of out of the equation temporarily for now. Once you remove the temporary, though, road's still in good condition, and is that something that we'd probably be looking to do again in the spring? Reinstall the temporary on Billings? And I believe there was one more slated out on West Sixth Area at some point, too. So when we removed it, though, I'm saying the road was in good condition after removal.
Senator Gitchia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilors, we would be, it would depend on the RSR value or the rating on that particular road. The temporaries are nice, but if we could put permanent pieces in, that's what we've been working on, Ms. Altman's been working on that particular matter. And it really just requires, it's an in-lock, just spreading out a little bit more so our plows in the winter wouldn't pull them up. So it's important to note that this is a different conversation for every street. So if the road value is, I'm going to say it's less than 50, that'd be a temporary, potentially a temporary, something we can take up and put down. But if it's more than 50, and please don't, it might be 60, we're still working on these numbers, but we would do a lock and key where we're not ripping up the road. So the temporary, excuse me, the permanent ones, which we're talking about, which we will be moving forward on, I hope, in coming months, we're thinking more permanent than temporaries. But on the roadways that are 20% and 30% of the RSR value, we could absolutely consider putting temporary, temporary speed humps in that area if it's not going to ruin the road anymore. We did find that once we did pull up that area, it did damage the road a tad more than it stated it would have. So we're working on that as well. But definitely slowing down the traffic in and around the streets, that's been the wish of this council, and I think this has been a great opportunity to give, quite frankly, the people their streets back and slowing traffic down.
All in favor say aye, opposed, motions, pass. 15, 7 o'clock, we'll start the general public hearings. 4.1, we have an ordinance to amend zoning extension, TTF zone, for 684 Wester Street. We can also take the communication from 6.3 to go along with the general public hearing. There was a planning board recommendation for proposed zoning change for parcels at 684 Wester Street. Opening meeting for all in favor. In favor, in favor. Get out of the way, Mr. Mayor, it's okay with me. Senator Gitchia.
Oh. Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I do have a letter from a neighbor who asked me to read this in favor of the project. Morgan Shermahorn, 21 Tyler Park, Lowell, Mass. Dear councilors, good evening. My name is Morgan Shermahorn. My home is at 21 Tyler Park, is a direct abut to 684 Wester Street. My husband and I purchased our home in 2017 as a place to begin and raise our family. The charm and character of the historic homes in the neighborhood drew us in, along with the beautiful trees, the cultural diversity, and of course, the iconic Tyler Park. We always considered the American Legion Club to be an eyesore in the neighborhood, but we grew to accept it. When we learned of the seal of the property, we became increasingly worried about a potential bar, nightclub, or even a restaurant taking over the space. Traffic noise and the smells would surely drive us out eventually. Over the past several months, however, we have become more confident in our decision to stay put, largely thanks to Dave Daley's consideration and patience as he worked with us and our neighbors to ensure a development plan that many of us feel comfortable with. My husband and I are happy to support the Daley Group in their effort to build four single-family homes along Wester Street. I'll end it there, but she's in favor. Thank you.
Any others who should speak in favor?
Robert Hawley, I live at 67 Stratom Street. I'm a taxpayer. I served seven years on your school committee, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the Daley Group's history. One time on the school committee, we needed a special ed school because one closed in Methuen. Who came, who came to our aid in Lowell? The Daley Group. A few years after that, we had to get rid of a vendor, a busing company that drives our special needs kids around, and we needed someone to come to support us and get vehicles to drive our special ed students, who came with a Mack truck. They brought in the best equipment, the Daley Group. Now with construction and building, which we're here for, I'm here in favor of what the Daley Group's trying to do for a few reasons. Not too long ago, the building department in the city wasn't good. I had a friend, I'm retired, I was a 40-year roofer, I'd been around construction my whole life, and my friend, Wes Tucksbury Construction, he's out of it now, too. It was not good. Right now, this city is doing a great job as far as the building department. I hear your name a lot, Mr. Machado, which is, I'm just trying to give you a thumbs up. But when it comes to building, I'm going to go right to what I seen yesterday. I drove down Chapel Street. It's an area that I grew up in, and I wanted to look at everything. There was so much trash on the corner of Union Street and Chapel. That's right next to where Santoro's Sub Shop was. There was clothes, trash everywhere. I didn't have my phone on me, I was charging at home because I put everything on Facebook. The next day, I woke up, I said, "I'm going to go take a video of that now." I go down, I drive up Union Street toward Gorham Street, and it was all cleaned. I couldn't believe it. All the trash was picked up. I looked to the left, there was a building just put up by who? The Daley Group. You can go see that right now, I bet you they just wrapped up that house. This guy is a fantastic builder. My brother does most of Kazanjin's building. My son has done most of Dave Trahan's buildings. Rourke, Zorbus, Jim Zorbus, forgive me, I didn't write it down, but this Daley Group is as good as anybody, and I seen him down at the beach for years, and I was getting depressed over it. He's back here, Mr. Manager, because your city council and the building department are doing a much better job. So I'm just saying thank you for the time, and I'm glad, I hope you guys support the Daley Group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That portion of the meeting is closed. Any opposition? Opposition? Opposition, that portion of the meeting is closed. The motion to adopt by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Yem, roll call to the clerk.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Blanda.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Gitchia.
Yes.
Council Janas.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
11 years.
4.2, ordinance to amend zoning. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. 4.2, ordinance to amend zoning extension, TTF zone, 71 North Barriker Street. I'll also take 6.4 communication from the planning board recommendation for proposed zoning change as well. So we'll start the opening meeting for all those in.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would.
Legally, I have to open a meeting for all those in favor.
Okay, for sure. Thank you.
So I'm going to open the meeting, and go directly to the petitioner for us, okay?
Yes. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Attorney George Theodore, 491 Dutton Street, Lowell, representing the petitioner, Stephen Doherty, the trustee of the Doherty Realty Trust, who presented this petition for rezoning of North Barriker Road to extend the single-family zoning into, extend the TTF zone into the single-family zone. We received a favorable recommendation from the planning board last Monday. However, we have presented to you, we have filed with the clerk, addressed to the mayor, a request to withdraw this petition, withdraw the petition without prejudice, and we ask that the council act on that tonight. And I thank you.
Motion to open, withdraw, petition by Council Mercia, by Council Dakota, opposed, opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, motion, speak for itself.
Thank you. This motion, again, with some of the discussion that's in the pipeline, I thought it was a good time. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I know you established an ad hoc committee for the purpose of examining potential usage of Superior Courthouse. So if I could, could I refer this to that ad hoc Subcommittee? This comes for many reasons. One of the reasons that I've saw personally is over in Centerville with the sale of St. Louis Parcel. It was a large acre, I think it's 14 acres total, private development grabbed it. At the time, the city did not exercise the right to take advantage of that opportunity. I think we have a lot of projects in the pipeline, again, with potential housing development. We don't really have a solid grip, I don't believe, on what our population looks like in three years, and five years, and 10 years. So I think by working with the school and bringing in an organization that specializes in this with a forecast, at least I think it helps with capital planning in the future. So then if properties present themselves available, we can make informed decisions because, as we've seen, we've had to purchase modular classrooms, amongst other things, to provide additional space. So if we have a real list, and we can kind of set a goal as to what to anticipate for student numbers in the near future, in the long-term future, at least, again, as properties present themselves, it's an easier decision to make for those in the position to make that decision. Thank you.
Senator Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Robinson brings up a good point here, though I think many of, I think his question may be answered probably within the next two years and when the completion of the high school is finished, which would leave us with the present Lowell High School freshman academy vacant, that will give us some space, which may or may not then lend itself to the Laura Lee or the LeBlanc School as property to be sold. So I think that might be somewhere we may want to wait and then have the city manager work with the superintendent because I think it might, might come to light a little bit more at that point.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is actually an excellent motion. I know the freshman academy may come online, but I also think having like the enrollment projections and facilities, kind of look at all the facilities ahead of time before that happens would put us in a good place. I'd also, I know the Jean Doc opened, I don't know if there was plans around abandoning like the Laura Lee and LeBlanc, some of the schools that have really reached their limits of, you know, serving the needs of students. So if we could have, you know, request them to take a look at that, I think it would be a good thing. Thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. 511, Council Robinson requests the mayor establish a committee with the intention of identifying and establishing locations and funding streams to create a boxing gym in Lowell. Seconded by Council Scott, Council Robinson.
Thank you.
We'll start, Council Robinson, do you want to just put that to the city manager? Do you want me going out looking for locations for a gym?
Well, the way, this was brought to me by some residents, and whatever way you think is the proper way to handle this, I was expecting and anticipating or looking for the creation of a committee made up mainly of members of the community that will put in the sweat equity, do the legwork, try to identify locations, funding streams, as well as if anything pops up on the city's radar, maybe they could bring it to that committee. But I know there's plenty of members in the public that would like to be organized committee sanctioned from the city to at least poke around because we have the National Golden Gloves coming up in a couple of years, and, you know, I know we've all discussed this in the past on the floor, and so I think the creation of a resident-led or community-member-led committee to do this kind of legwork and see if they can find anything similar to what is going on with the Colley Stadium project currently, where you have a group of community members out there trying to do the heavy lift on a project like this, and then if we can help them in any way, then I'd encourage that.
Yeah, it's something I don't want to do, I just think it's a big ask, right? So, a minute to say to the city manager, if people want to reach out to him to be on committee, awesome.
Okay, excellent.
Motion amended by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Mercia. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think this is something that we can look at. I think the same folks that have been calling me are calling you as well, and I'll say to all of them, and you can say to anyone, please, you know, give me a call. We'll put together, we'll put together a committee to start looking at this, and once we find something, we'll have to look to see the financing and who actually wants to run it. So that'd be, that'd be a perfect opportunity. I agree with what the mayor's saying, to, we can handle that.
Okay, perfect. So the, anyone that contacts me with interest on this, refer them to the manager's office. Okay, thank you very much.
If you want to pay me $200 a year, council, I'll do it. So, yeah. But all in favor say aye, opposed, motion passes. 513, Council Gitchia, request city manager of the property department provide the city council with the plans for water infrastructure that will be placed on the new Rourke Bridge, seconded by. we didn't, it was somehow cut out of it, that it's still there and the size is adequate, that's all. It would feed the lower highlands and the upper highlands. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, we do, we have been working on this, but I will get the final dollar figure for it. It'd be a good opportunity for us to answer this and let everybody know this has been on the radar screen of the engineer's office as well. It's a 24-inch main, I believe, on the right-hand side of the new Rourke Bridge.
Yeah, I haven't seen it in any plans online, so that, we're just looking to make sure, like the Beaver Street one, we're just trying to check in and make sure it's there.
That's why I think we learned a lot there.
Thank you.
All the fair, say, I oppose, motion passes, 514. Counsel Getchea requests city manager to reach out to District Attorney Marion Ryan to follow up on a conversation from a past downtown meeting involving adding a homeless court program within the city of Lowell. Seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I look at this as just another tool in the toolbox, that when we talked to DA Marion Ryan, we talked about this stuff, and we talked about having a homeless court. And the purpose of the homeless court, there's only two. One, Boston Municipal Court, it's held at the Pine Street Inn in La Manuel Shattuck Hospital. And then there's one other in Cambridge. They started in 2010 as a private pilot program. The purpose of the court is to assist defendants who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, secure permanent housing, employment, and government benefits. Upon the completion of a substance addiction treatment program, job training, or mental health treatment, a defendant's pending or open default warrants are removed in misdemeanors in nonviolent felony cases. And I think it's important to try to get this here if it's possible. So I want to thank you for even taking this up.
Counsel Belangia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the motion by Counsel Getchea, and it, you know, this, it portrays, you know, the council's will to assist this population of the mentally ill and homeless population that's in our street that we're, that we're working with now. So along with that being said, you know, on top of this, I remember, I was, believe I was with Counsel Getchea when attorney, District Attorney Marion Ryan came out with this announcement of this, and we were very ecstatic, but looking to see where we're at with it. But, and Mr. Mayor, maybe you could be helpful with this, and what is the, is the drug court still in existence? Because I'm hearing boots on the ground that it is not. Could you, could you give me any information on that?
No, the drug court is still in existence, but the health court is still in existence. The homeless court will not be coming to Lowell District Court.
No, okay.
It's been vetted many times, you know, in order for a homeless court. There are four criteria where a warrant is in place, a misdemeanor is the charge, homelessness or cause to be homeless. And in Lowell, we have more than, we have numerous resources to assist. You know, the homeless court, it's in Boston, it's still a bit different. You know, we have tried so many different ways through the city and through the court system. The homeless court provides no end. We can't force people to look for housing. We, as a probation department, we assist them whether you're close to being homeless or you're homeless all the time. We team with the sheriff's department, as Counsel Mercier knows, we team with the co-op program as well. Everything is in place for those that want to locate and have housing. The issue that we deal with here in the city, as has been stated multiple times, over and over again, is those that decide not to go through the process to seek housing. And that's where the mental health courts and the drug courts come in. You know, those, those courts, they have more suspended sentences in place, probation in place, crimes that are not just misdemeanors, that people can be held more accountable if, you know, don't seek the treatment and the necessary addiction services that are in place by law within the Commonwealth. So, you know, it was decided at the time where DA Ryan brought this up the first time that it would not be coming to Lowell District Court, and I, you know, the motion is just to see what can be done, but it's just not happening in Lowell.
So is the, thank you very information, very informative, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So is the drug court still in Lowell District Court? It is, and.
We have, we have Veterans Court, we have Mental Health Court, we have Drug Court.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, but I do attending on supporting the motion. Thank you.
Okay. All the fair, say, I oppose, motion passes, 515. Counsel Belangia, work with the city manager with the property department to put Garden Road on the paving list. Seconded by Counsel Getchea, Counsel Belangia.
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor.
All the fair, say, I oppose, motion passes. Six communications from the city manager, 6.1. Motion response, Lawrence Street and Moore Street. Counsel Scott.
Thank you for the response.
6.1B signal warrants. Counsel Scott.
It's on mine.
It's not yours?
It's on mine.
Oh, Counsel Getchea, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I'm looking forward to future reports on this, that's all. I mean, you highlighted it well enough that it looks like something slipped between 2017 and today, but hopefully we get reports more frequently, maybe in the summer of this year, and see, you know, where the funding is and how we get to this. So I'll just hold off until the summertime and look forward to seeing other reports. Thank you.
C, motion response, speed regulation change. Counsel Getchea.
Thank you. Again, the same thing. I'm just wondering how long roughly it would take the state to okay the final execution of this? Is it something that is relatively quick? Is it something that other communities have done it? So I'm just wondering, is it something quick or is it something that's going to be like the State House and some reading somewhere?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, this is on our radar screen to reach out to the delegation as well to kind of move the secretary, secretary's office along when it comes to this. This is, obviously, it's something that we agree with, this is a good thing. Ms. Altman's been working on this, but to answer the question, it'll be done in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. I can't answer that, but we're going to continue the pressure, talk to the delegation, to speak with the secretary, and to get that moving forward as soon as possible.
Could you, at some point, just give us an update? Wouldn't you hear back from them on whatever amount of time they're thinking this?
If you wish, we could, I'll put a 30-day call on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Let the council know where we're at.
Thank you.
Great. Awesome. 6.2, information report, front-runner of the city. I'd like to speak on this, so I'd like to ask the, Mr. Vice Chair to take the chair.
On the motion 6.2, let me turn to the manager. Who want to speak first, or the mayor want to speak first?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I just want to, on behalf of the city of Lowell, I want to thank UN Habitat as well as the World Urban Pavilion, and quite frankly, thank you to the entire city council for allowing this to happen. This opportunity, I think, is going to benefit us to potentially become a front-runner community, the first in the United States. There are many people looking at it. I know that many of the councils will be speaking about it. But you know something? I have to say thank you to the mayor because it really all started with just a conversation. We've heard that around. And these conversations, when you have an opportunity to travel to different areas, every councilor here, when you go on vacation or whatever, I'm sure your loved ones and spouses love the fact that you take a picture of something and you say, "Hey, we should be doing this in Lowell." And I think that is such a wonderful opportunity that the mayor took, seized on it, and as he and I have talked in the past, you miss every shot you don't take. This is an incredible opportunity. I was so proud to be there the second time, following up on the mayor's first visit. So I want to say thank you to the entire council for supporting this and encouraging the entire council that the future, you know, the future is bright. With everything that we have going on with the development of the Hildreth Building, Broadway, you know, Merrimack Valley Food Bank, the Link, Acre Crossing, this right here is just another opportunity, and it's because a conversation was started. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much to all the councilors for supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just want to give a little history and background that has led us to where we are tonight. Back in May of this past year, Capital Intelligence Associates, a multimedia platform that produces in-depth print and digital economic reviews featuring top-level analysis on key issues facing the cities they cover, including Lowell, highlighted exclusive insights of prominent industry leaders, reached out to the mayor's office looking to do an article. There were reports that were produced with two goals in mind. The first one is to provide comprehensive investment knowledge to external investors and the global business community, and to promote the market, us being Lowell as a place to invest and to do business. The article was published both in print and online in July, and soon thereafter, I was invited to the United Nations to speak at the Urban Economic Forum VI, held in Toronto. The Urban Economy Forum is an organization that collaborates with the United Nations system and international partners to accelerate the implementation of the United Nations' Sustainable Development Goals, which we, you will be hear more, you'll hear about more later on, through innovative and practical solutions to urban management, economy, and resources. While at the forum in September, I participated in multiple discussions, including a roundtable with other municipal leaders to talk about how tourism can be sustained while advancing the quality of life in the city and most notably Lowell. I did a very easy job of speaking about the city and all the great things that we have accomplished in the past and what we hope to accomplish in the future. In attendance at this conference or forum were members of the United Nations as well as world leaders in innovation, AI, housing, and sustainability. While at the forum, I was fortunate enough to network, meet, and have discussions with a variety of set of leaders. The main focus throughout each of these discussions was always how we improve the quality of life in Lowell. And during those three days, I learned about the front-runner of the city program and its sustainable development goals. SDGs, as they are called, 17 calls for action aiming to improve and provide a blueprint for prosperity and success for people, places, and obviously, the planet. Equality, education, affordable cleaning, affordable clean energy, gender equality, and eradication of poverty are just a few of the 17 goals. And during these discussions, I was constantly in touch with the Assistant City Manager, Yvonne Baez-Rose, asking her if we met these criteria for eligibility to become a front-runner of the city. And as she will talk about later on this evening, the city of Lowell already meets and exceeds most of these goals. And we continue to make progress towards the others that we may not quite be up to speed on yet. And then since returning from the forum and updating the council during October city council meeting, then multiple Zoom calls have taken place between leaders of Lowell, the United Nations Pavilion in Toronto, and other leaders in SDGs. Soon thereafter, the council, along with the city manager and his team, were invited to take part in a trip to Toronto and surrounding areas to further discuss becoming a front-runner of the city, as well as tour some areas that have been redeveloped by following these 17 sustainable goals. Myself, along with councilors Chow, Dakota, Belangia, Noon, Mercier, and Scott, with joiner manager Golden and Assistant City Manager Baez-Rose, I'd like to sincerely thank the councilors who were able to make the trip. I would also like to thank councilors Getchea, Janess, Robinson, and Yem for their unwavering support and votes which allowed us to go. Their commitment to the trip is just as important as those who were able to attend. The trip ran from the November 13th to the 16th. It was a three days of extensive and intensive meetings, as well as site visits to Toronto, Richmond Hill, Regent Park, and the Distillery District. We all saw firsthand the positive effects and impacts of becoming a front-runner of the city. Areas that were downtrodden by crime, homelessness, and vagrancy have been redeveloped by partnering with the front-runner initiatives that put very significant amounts of funding into their communities. Like I think, I think I speak for the members of the council that were in attendance when I say we were absolutely blown away by the progress that these areas have made, as well as the excitement that we felt about the possibility of these initiatives coming to the city of Lowell. During these discussions, I'd like to acknowledge some specific points made by the councilors to members of both the United Nations Pavilion and the world leaders in the industry that were with us. Each councilor brought similar and also different backgrounds to each discussion. Counsel Mercier, as usual, was the most popular, charming, and engaging member of our contingent. She asked questions, gave examples, took pictures, and spoke about her love of Lowell to everyone that was near her. Counsel Belangia, off his background as a small business owner in a downtown area, he touched upon both beneficial aspects of the struggles that become, that comes with owning a commercial property, as well as offered initiatives that could be of assistance. Then once Counsel Dakota, Counsel Dakota offered his background in transportation, that being an expert, he became the councilor with the most questions we're directed at. His knowledge in this area strikes many of the 17 SDGs that Lowell will be required to comply with. I'd also thank councilors Chow and Noon. They were tremendous in their description of Lowell as a welcoming, diverse, and ethically rich community which welcomes all and treats everyone equally. Both of their stories of how they came to Lowell and how they thrived in Lowell left the group even more impressed with the city of Lowell. Counsel Scott spoke about the history of Lowell, everything from the state of our national park to Lowell High School being the first school in the country to teach both male and female students, and how Massachusetts, and more specifically Lowell, is a perfect choice to become a front-runner of the city. Over the course of the three days, Assistant City Manager Yvonne Baez-Rose showcased her knowledge and expertise in planning and sustainability, and gave very descriptive initiatives on what Lowell's future hopes to be. She was a member of our group that was most relied on and represented Lowell in a tremendous fashion with those in attendance. And finally, manager Golden's key role was just sitting back and enjoying free coffee. But seriously speaking, the manager showed the determination and drive in professing that Lowell is both extremely interested and, in fact, is a great choice in becoming a front-runner of the city. He was the main cog in negotiating what would have to happen for us in order to become part of this program. I truly believe that the work that this council has done as a whole, along with the Golden administration, has led us to tonight. I, for one, am not afraid to say that tonight's vote by this city council to instruct the manager to enter into an MOU for a front-runner of the city status is the single biggest vote in Lowell in the past 50 years. Lowell has long been a leader in many aspects, both in the past and currently. Now, tonight, we have a chance to do so again. The Industrial Revolution was a period of time where technological and scientific progress transformed economies and societies from agrarian to industrialized. Lowell is at the center of the Industrial Revolution in the United States. We have the opportunity to repeat that here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the trip. I heard this a lot of fun, so Counsel Mercier, she want to?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. On November 20th through the 23rd, seven city councilors ventured up to Toronto, Ontario, and Richmond Hill, Canada, to learn about the front-runner city plans, which is an ambitious initiative to become the first global city in the United States. This initiative not only aligns with the United Nations' New Urban Agenda and SDG Sustainable Development Goals, but also looks beyond 2030, including climate adaptation efforts to transform its neighborhoods while preserving cultural identity, while embracing modern functionality and global collaboration. We learnt that this initiative is an opportunity for Lowell to redefine its identity as a global leader in urban sustainability. This plan also involves UMass Lowell Climate Change Initiative and Energy Engineering Programs directly supporting clean energy, urban resilience, and sustainability goals. You may be asking, why Lowell? Why should we be the first? I say, why not Lowell? Lowell's historical significance, economic diversity, and proactive policies align seamlessly with the goals of the United Nations. Lowell has demonstrated leadership in clean energy, adaptation, equitable housing, and inclusive urban growth. My personal thoughts on this plan and what I observed in Toronto, that with the city of Lowell with very little land to spare and the urgent need for affordable housing, it is apparent that we can't build wide, so why not build up? We can do it. I know we can, and I've seen the beauty of it in Toronto, and I can see it here in Lowell. What we experienced on this fact-finding mission was seeing significant revitalization through investment, leverage from private and public investments that would make cities like Lowell inclusive, safe, resilient, and sustainable. We had quite a good opportunity to learn what they experienced and bring it back here because their redevelopment plans align with our program goals as well. We can change our city slogan of "There's a lot to like about Lowell" to "There's a lot more to like about Lowell." And I was honored to be a part of the Toronto, Canada connection. it is apparent that we can't build wide, so why not build up? We can do it, I know we can, and I've seen the beauty of it in Toronto, and I can see it here in Lowell. What we experienced on this fact-finding mission was seeing significant revitalization through investment, leverage from private and public investments that would make cities like Lowell inclusive, safe, resilient, and sustainable. We had quite a good opportunity to learn what they experienced and bring it back here because their redevelopment plans align with our program goals as well. We can change our city slogan of there's a lot to like about Lowell to there's a lot more to like about Lowell, and I was honored to be a part of the Toronto-Canada connection. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Mercier. Councillor Belanger, next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. Great comments by my colleagues, Mayor Rourke and councillor Mercier. This trip was everything that Dave explained, and then some. You know, for three days, majority of this council and members of the administration were technically Lowell ambassadors to the United Nations. That's no exaggeration, and it was a tremendous, tremendous honor. But it was three days of action-packed, where the UN Habitat graciously hosted members of this council for informational sessions, as well as visiting projects completed under this program. We were in complete awe of the transformation, the high rises, the combination of culture, housing, innovation, aquatic center in the middle of a big city. It was just so impressive. But does Lowell fit the bill? I cannot stress enough how much we align, as we already adopted most, if not all, of these best practices that the United Nations is looking for. We're talking among ourselves, and as they're educating us on what they're looking for, we're nudging each other, saying, we're already doing this, we're already doing this. So it was like, you know, this organization did their homework, and Lowell was there for a reason. So for that being said, we are an ideal candidate to be the front-runner city, and by that is the first in the United States. Huge, absolutely huge. As we already, a mini-international city, as councillor Mercier alluded to, we've already had the diversity and culture in place, and we coexist like no other. But with Lowell's historical significance, economic diversity, and proactive policies that we've adopted over the years align seamlessly with the goals of the United Nations. We were, again, a perfect fit. The transformative potential here, I cannot stress enough, of urban innovation with UMass Lowell being our partner, and city transformation is massive, and that is no exaggeration. So if I could sum all this up, I would call it Lowell's Industrial Revolution 2.0, and that's no exaggeration, was put us on as a, the largest hub, one of the largest hubs in the country back in the Industrial Revolution. So this would all be done with a theme based on Lowell being the heart of the Industrial Revolution. So with that being said, so excited, I mean, really, we were thrilled, we were hoping our other colleagues were there with us, we know they're thrilled as well. But I do, Mr. Vice Mayor, through you, to Mayor Rourke, I want to congratulate Mayor Rourke, his hard work. His initial visit in September is what set this off, and he urged us all, every one of us, the importance of trying to make this trip, and was he spot-on. He really, really was. So I want to congratulate him. He potentially struck gold for the city of Lowell here, and that's no, when he says this could be the biggest vote in fifty years, it's no exaggeration. You had to see it to believe it. Of this many blocks, whereas we're touring, and in the freezing cold, it didn't matter of what this organization, with their help, what we can accomplish here in Lowell. So again, congratulations, Mayor Rourke, well done, and I anticipate the blessings from the council to have the manager enter into negotiations for an MOU to make Lowell, quote-unquote, "the first front-runner city in the United States." So very exciting stuff, I can't wait to work alongside with my colleagues and the administration to getting this done. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Belanger. Councillor Dakota, and then councillor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I remember when we voted for us to make the visit, Mayor Rourke had kind of given me a brief summary of what potentially this could be, and I think I had mentioned it during the city council meeting, that this could potentially be a game changer. I am totally convinced now that this is going to be a game changer, after what I saw. I want to first thank our host, Montreux, they were fantastic hosts. But to see the Regent Park project, of what they've done there, six hundred and thirty-seven workforce housing units, six hundred and thirty-three subsidized affordable housing units, nineteen hundred market rate units, hundred and twelve thousand commercial retail space, thirty-nine thousand of community space, and new public library, that was just in the Regent Park. The area that councillor Belanger and myself have thrilled at was the Distillery District, so, need I say more? It was a visit there to showcase major tourist attraction in Toronto that was once vacant industrial space, and former home of the Golda Haem and Wards Distillery. The district is comprised of forty-seven buildings built in the nineteenth century and had historical characteristics very similar to Lowell. The district is now home to a bustling pedestrian-only retail space that includes small artisans, art galleries, shops, restaurants, and bars. The district was developed by private developers without witnessable investment, and on average brings in two million visitors annually. Picture that, folks. It was an amazing trip. I got back on that plane saying, I'm trying to get a vision of what Lowell is going to look like on top of the LINK program. I mean, yes, there is going to be a lot to like about Lowell in about three or four, five years when these projects happening. We have a high school that's going to get finished in a couple of years. We have the LINK program that's going to be starting in another year and a half, and then we have this on the horizon. I wished everybody in the city of Lowell could have gone on this visit. It was amazing, absolutely amazing, and to see what they did there, and to envision what Lowell could possibly become was worthwhile, and I want to thank Mayor Rourke, but thank, actually councillor Mercier, because she was the one who actually put this whole deal together, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Dakota. Councillor Chow, and then councillor Janess after.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Excellent report by the mayor. As you hear from my colleagues, the one thing that you hear over and over again, the type of development these groups are doing, it's what the city of Lowell already have, have been doing. It's that we match the same goals, and it's not just development they do, they're doing sustainable development, you're talking about the energy, about, you know, housing, about public space, green space, all the great stuff that we're doing and they're doing. The one key aspect to keep on adding, emphasizing over and over again, is that these developments are sustainable. It's not like when you're done with the project, it can go sideways, nobody paid attention to it. The type of development these groups are doing is sustainable development, it's equitable development. I think it's going to be great, it's the same goals the city of Lowell already, and the city of Lowell, we've been talking about making the city of Lowell not only equitable development, but also make it a great city, make it a great home, make it a tourist city, make it a destination city. I think once if we were, if we're able to adopt this policy, we are going to make Lowell a destination city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chow. Councillor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the delegation that went. I really wish I could have joined. This seems like an incredible project, an incredible opportunity for Lowell to be a part of. And, Mr. Manager, I don't know if you recall, but the first conversation you and I had when you were letting me know you were interested in this role, I told you that I wasn't looking for someone to come in here and be a plate spinner to keep things going. I wanted someone who was going to come in and take bold action, and do the big things to make Lowell a better place. This is the perfect example of what I was talking about. I didn't know this existed at the time, but if I had, I would have been waving this in your face. This is incredible, and you just read through the seventeen goals, and it's everything, everything we're trying to do, everything we want to do, everything we want to be as a city. And so this is just incredible, and, Mr. Manager, I would ask that we get updates quarterly, if not more frequent, either in these meetings or in a subcommittee meeting, just to keep us up to date with what's happening, what's coming down the pike, so that we know, so that the residents know, because this is exciting, and I think it's something we need to keep in the forefront. But thank you to everyone who was able to go on that trip and make this happen. It is a really, really exciting project, and I can't see, can't wait to see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Janess. Councillor Gitcher, and then councillor Noon, and after that councillor Robinson, councillor Scott, why not? Go ahead, councillor Gitcher.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sometimes you get lucky in life and you get to meet people. In 2014, I was able to go to Toronto and meet the chief planner, her name was Jennifer Kazmat, and she spoke, and spoke about a vision of Toronto, and I'm sad that I wasn't able to go because of work commitments, and see what her vision actually came to fruition because she was the chief planner from 2012 to 2017 in Toronto, and that was their vision, biking, waterfront, urban, move it forward. She pushed all of that, and she actually was in a conference pushing these thoughts and all of this, and you guys got to see the outcome, which I would have loved to have seen because she was so, had a lot of energy in the room, and said that they were going to make those changes, and she would fight against the mayor at the time. We got pictures of Mayor Ford at the time because we did that tour, so we went through, and Mayor Ford was a very, you know, high-energy person at the time in Toronto who got in some trouble with the law, but she would push back on them and say, this is the vision, this is the thing, and these visions take a lot of time to get to, they're not something that you just overnight get to do. So I'm happy that you guys had the thing, I'm happy that councillor Rourke had somebody write him that speech. I'm saddened that she's leaving tonight. Councillor Rourke, it was very, Mayor Rourke, I'm sorry, I had to. Thank you again, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gitcher. Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to thank Mayor Rourke for, you know, first initiated contact, and then, you know, got invited to this first frontrunner in the US. It was overwhelming at the event, you know, to see what, you know, they've done over there, you know, but also I'm not surprised that Lowell, the Sustainable Development Goal, the SDG seventeen goal, Lowell had met, and in some cases exceed eleven out of that seventeen goal already, and why not? We are doing it already, why not do it with support, with resources from them? Some of those goals that Lowell had met, such as, you know, affordable and clean energy, we do expanding renewable energy adoption in the city here, we have industrial innovation and infrastructure, what we're doing here is strengthening technologies and industrial sector. We also doing here in Lowell as well, the Sustainable City and Community. So those are just a few of the goals that SDG have had, and we meet, in some cases, as I said, exceed eleven out of the seventeen. So I'm happy that we are entered into this MOU, and I know that the team from the SDG and the team from Toronto are excited to come and visit and see Lowell for itself, and give us assistance as they promised us to do with this MOU. So thanks again, my fellow delegation, and the mayor for leading us on this trip.
Thank you, councillor Noon. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. After reviewing all this information, like, I just want to say first and foremost, thank you to Mayor Rourke. I know when he came back from the initial trip, and he was excited, and you explained to the council how, you know, this opportunity existed. I thank you for having the vision to not just go up and see it, but come back and bring others back with you to really explore this. Like I said, the last time, I believe we were voting on whether or not we were saying to accept the group trip to go. I fully support seeing outside of what we see every day. I think sometimes all it takes in order to think outside the box and bring something different to the table is a spark, and I think getting out of your comfort zone, going up to Toronto, meeting with other people, seeing how they do it, that sparks that vision, that sparks that creativity, and I'm thankful. This sounds like an amazing opportunity for the city, and none of this would have been possible if my colleagues, led by Mayor Rourke and the administration and Ms. Baez-Rose, went up there and asked the questions, really put their hands on this opportunity, and kind of felt it out, and came back. And I know, just briefly speaking to the manager on a different issue, and this popped up briefly, and there was no hesitation, it's all excitement, and that tells me that, you know, this has been vetted in person by the team that Lowell trusts to go up there and poke around, kick the tires on this project, and I think we have a lot to look forward to, and I think we'd be honored, I know I would be, to give permission to pursue negotiating an MOU to move along in this process. I mean, I think this potentially, where we are in some areas, we're kind of at a stalemate, and I think something just like this could break that logjam. I mean, we've talked about so many creative, innovative ideas and thoughts, and there's a million reasons why they haven't taken off immediately, but is this the missing piece of all of it? And that's yet to be determined, but I too am looking forward to what comes out of this, and I thank you all for coming back with such good news and data, and I hope Lowell's in a much better place in two, three, four, five, ten years, twenty years plus, as a result of this trip that Mayor Rourke went up, spoke with some people, came back, and brought others along to get that spark that they needed to really break this logjam. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. I remember our trip to Montreal as well, that's eye-opening, and provided some ideas that we can bring back to Lowell. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So I'd also like to thank Mayor Rourke for bringing this forward to us, and I'd also like to thank our superstar from our trip, Assistant Manager Yvonne Baez-Rose. Her work was just incredible that she brought forward. The UN Habitat promotes, their mandate is to promote socially and environmentally sustainable towns and cities, and when they brought forward to us what the Sustainable Development Goals were, the seventeen goals, I saw Assistant Manager Yvonne Baez-Rose kind of light up, you know, saying that that's where we're, that's where we're already heading, that's already Lowell, that's already in line also with the state of Massachusetts. It was incredible touring the city, seeing their equitable access, their safe housing, their abundance of community space and sustainability, sustainable development. I just, I really look forward to hopefully executing the MOU in the support of all my colleagues. I will read this because I think it's important for people to hear at home, that the goal of the MOU would be for the city to be connected to a global network of practitioners in the field of finance, construction, design, sustainability, community engagement, and community development, to share knowledge, information, and bring their expertise and capital Lowell. I mean, this is a huge think tank that we're gaining here with the, you know, the UN partnership. So again, I thank everyone involved, and I'm glad to support this. Thank you.
Councillor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership, and that's the reason why I vote for you to be the mayor, your leadership. Councillor Janess talked about supporting the manager because of his leadership skill. I support Mr. Mayor for your leadership as well, and it is your instinct that was, you know, connected in September when you attended, and you right away see the opportunity that we can bring this to the city of Lowell, make Lowell the first city to implement this. I read the report, it's a great report that was presented in the package, and as I was reading, I realized that certain project it was talking about in this report, particularly Regent Park, I see that they have six hundred and thirty-seven workforce housing unit and all of that, and make me think right away on the development in the acre, that including the Merrimack Corridor development, and then we talked about the acre crossing, Suffolk Place coming. So these are the areas similar to what the acres is doing right now, part of the development. In my motion, talked about the solar-driven streetlight, this can be the SDG seven, because the report talked about the SDG eleven. This can be the SDG seven because the report talked about the SDG eleven. But the UN also have SDG seven that was driven by the solar and then all the other, the project that tried to eliminating the carbon footprint by 2030. So I would encourage us to add this to our list application. And I can hardly wait to support this project, to vote for our manager to enter in an MOU. Yes. After we approve, if I want to make a motion that we make a second trip so that I can attend with you to. Thank you.
If this goes through council, I'm making a lot of trips. I'd like to pass it off to Assistant City Manager, Yvani Bayes-Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So in summary, I don't want to be repetitive about what many of the councils have already said, but overall, my impression throughout, as we prepared for the trip and while we were at the trip, is that Lowell is already doing so much of this work. When we went to Richmond Hill and spoke with the mayor there about their community's decision to pursue this designation formally, he also said that, you know, when they looked into it, they felt like many of these priorities aligned with what the community was already doing. And making the effort to get this formal designation opened the doors up to significantly more resources and best practices that otherwise they wouldn't have access to. And so he felt like it was an obvious choice for their community, and I feel like that's true for Lowell. I continue to be really excited about this. I definitely have been in sort of planner mode and looking at this program through that lens. And I feel like it will help bring information that we otherwise may not have access to. You know, we can have ideas or try to figure out how, you know, things might be able to work. But as a frontrunner city, we would be able to call up the folks from the World Urban Pavilion and ask them if they have examples from other parts of the globe where we could then take those best practices and adopt them here to Lowell. So I really, I think that alone is of significant value to the community. The other thing that I think is important is that this is very much not a one-size-fits-all program. They do really want Lowell to come up with a vision for Lowell. This is not about us, you know, only trying to fit in into their program. It's really taking the ideals of this program and adopting the things that will work here locally. So we will be able to push forward the projects that we are prioritizing and identify the way we want to grow as a community. And I think that's another important component, is that as much as they value development, they also value community engagement. And so this will be very driven by our community, which I think, again, gives us an opportunity to make this very unique for our city. So I'm very excited about it, based on how the mayor of Richmond Hill described it. You know, it really can be as easy as picking up the phone or shooting the World Urban Pavilion an email to ask questions and really tapping into an immense knowledge base. And so from a planning perspective, I'm very much geeking out about it and excited at the opportunity to work on this locally. And I think that it's not, it will be, this is very much about Lowell thinking much bigger, thinking many years ahead. But I don't think that it's a stretch for our community. I think we are really genuinely doing so much of this work that if anything, it'll help us get to that end game faster.
And I noticed that before, I just want to do a special thank you once again to Assistant City Manager, Yvani Bayes-Rose. I know I drove her crazy during my solo trip to Toronto, peppering her with calls and texts about the program, but she really was, like councillor Scott said, a star during our three-day trip that had all the answers to the questions that they were asking. They asked for initiatives that we could possibly look for. And she had more suggestions than I think all of us combined and, you know, really represented the city very, very well. And so special thanks to you, Ms. Bayes-Rose. Councillor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The three days that we were there, it was very busy hectic days from 9:30 in the morning till like 9:30 at night. It was all hands on deck working. But there was one particular day that we had an enjoyable experience. And that was when we were, the government provide us with two Cadillac SUVs. Half of the team was in one, the other half and the officials were in another. And we were going past this place and I see police all over blocking streets. And I couldn't figure out what was going on. It was the same time that Taylor Swift was coming into the Rogers Centre. And all the bystanders thought one of our cars had Taylor Swift in it. And they were waving and screaming and I felt like Taylor Swift.
I thought they were seeing me councillor, that's why I thought they were all there.
Yeah, maybe they thought it was.
Heard the mayor's going, Lowell's going to be there.
I know, they thought it was you.
Let me send you a few autographs, it wasn't too much.
Mr. Mayor, you should have had your giant ceremonial necklace at that time.
Yeah. And to councillor Janess's question earlier, this is not a long process. You know, they're hoping to obtain an MOU with the city within the next two or three months. And everything, if everything goes, you know, well and we get into it, you know, they want us to sign officially early next year. So it really is a very real, a very possible thing for the city of Lowell to be involved in. And I'm just very thankful to everybody that took part in it. With that being said, I'd like to take 7.2 out of order by councillor Janess, second by councillor Mercier. 7.2 is a vote to authorize the city manager to enter into an MOU for frontrunner city status. We're with a full reading and second reading by title, a motion to adopt by councillor Noon, second by councillor Chow. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Yes.
Councillor Yum.
Yes.
Councillor Belangia.
Yes.
Councillor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Dakota.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Eleven.
All right. 6.7, Communication for the City Manager, request of interstate travel, one for Health and Human Services, a motion to adopt by councillor Dakota, second by councillor Gitchia. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yum.
Yes.
Councillor Belangia.
Yes.
Councillor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Dakota.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon. Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke, 10 years.
8.1, Order from the City Manager, 68 trial with a full reading and second reading by title, a motion to adopt by councillor Janess, second by councillor Belangia. Roll call.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yum.
Yes.
Councillor Belangia.
Yes.
Councillor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Dakota.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon. Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
10 years.
8.1, Order from the City Manager, 68 trial with a full reading and second reading by title, a motion to adopt by councillor Janess, second by councillor Belangia. Roll call.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yum.
Yes.
Councillor Belangia.
Yes.
Councillor Chow.
Yes.
Councillor Dakota.
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Mercier.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Councillor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes. Nine, Subcommittee Report, 9.1, Housing Subcommittee, November 26, 2024. Chairman Yum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subcommittee met November 26 at 5:30 in the city council chamber. Present on the roll call were myself, councillor Gitchia, councillor Chow was absent. Also present were CFO Connor Baldwin, Assistant CFO Austin Ball, Yvani Bayes-Rose, a direct Assistant City Manager, and the DPD staff, Camilio Espita, City Manager Tom Golden, councillor Mercier, councillor Robinson via Zoom, councillor Belangia and councillor Scott. The two items were on the agenda and update regarding Affordable Housing Trust. And then the second item was a Lowell Forward Homes and Housing Production Plan, HPP. The CFO Baldwin provide a recap of prior discussion involving creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a statutory framework established by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54C, that afford communities the ability to set up a fund, dedicate certain revenue to a trust that can be used for application, funding application for affordable housing development within municipality. It can also be used for other types of housing assistance. Mr. Baldwin state that the city of Lowell sees this as an opportunity to attain some of our affordable housing goal, production, to produce 800 new affordable housing units by 2040. Last Tuesday, November 26, the city council, Esabadi, voted on two important affordable housing agenda after the public hearing. One, to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54C, establish the Lowell Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Two, create a Lowell Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund that include the purpose of the fund, create the board of trustee, consists of no more than, no fewer than five and no more than nine, including ex-officials, those person who are serving from time to time in the following capacities. The city manager of the city of Lowell or his or her destiny, mayor of the city of Lowell or his or her destiny, executive director of the Lowell Housing Authority or his or her destiny. Those members on the board who are not serving as an ex-official capacity shall be appointed by the city manager with the approval by the city council. Mr. Baldwin noted funding sources for the trust would include APA funding, which need to be committed and transferred to the trust before December 31, 2024, and spending it by 2026. The fund also can be, can come from Preservation Act donations. Mr. Baldwin also noted that currently there would be no linkage fee as part of the funding sources. Mr. Manager Golden stated that he continued conversation with various developers and other concerned parties and will get this to the city council, will get the city council input on the linkage fee. Councillor Mercier requests the creation of a master list of all the affordable housing unit created by various entity in the city, made it available online and to anyone. The meeting was also open to the public and Mr. Fred Fowles addressed the committee, noting the use of the trust as a developing tool. Councillor Gitchia noted his concern with the linkage fee. Mr. Baldwin noted any linkage ordinance would have to be established by the council. Councillor Gitchia reads a correspondent from Lowell Plan regarding the trust and the linkage fee and request to make this letter part of the record and no objections. So Mr. Baldwin noted that this correspondent with the Lowell, he corresponded with the Lowell Plan and explained the same to the director of the Lowell Plan. Councillor Gitchia requests what a credential would be needed to be a trustee, as well as the amount of APA money to be used. Manager Golden indicate it would be in the vicinity of $2 million to start in a fund from APA. Ms. Bayes-Rose noted that department is currently working through logistic of the trust and have review other communities' use of it. Mr. Baldwin comment on funding, loans and borrowing aspect of the trust. Due to the time constraint and then the large volume of the HPP, I have put this meeting to review the document that Ms. Rose provide us to another time that would be including in our discussion. It's a part two of the agenda, talking about Lowell Forward Homes and Housing Production. So the meeting adjourned around 6:15. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Yum. Two nonprofit organization subcommittee, December 3, 2024. Chairman Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Minutes of the nonprofit organization subcommittee held on December 3, 2024 in the city council chambers. Members present were councillor Noon, councillor Robinson. Also present were councillor Mercier, councillor Belangia and councillor Scott. The subcommittee first heard from Siobhan Sheehan and Nick Gamaro, Program Director for CTI Youth Services, Youth Build. They outlined the youth services program for 16 to 24-year-olds, from culinary, construction, OSHA training, serve safe management certifications, community service and educational programs. They highlighted the community service with over 21,607 construction hours, eight softball dugouts, six Habitat for Humanity homes, 300 cubbies built for the Lowell Boys and Girls Club, 9,575 community service meals cooked and served, 9,873 student lunches cooked and served, 4,057 catered meals cooked and served, and so much more. The second group to speak was Ronnie Hoy and Dave Aldrich, both founders and directors for Project Compass. They outlined Project Compass as a journey to a new beginning, providing up to 18 months of transitional housing support for young women 18 to 24, new moms and babies facing homelessness. Currently, they have provided 105 residents with 28,160 safe nights and have purchased a property at 192 Appleton Street to open a second location. The first location is in Chelmsford. They provided a project farm for a hands-on opportunity to experience the physical and emotional benefits of working with animals. They have had 721 participants to the farm to date. They have had community outreach, provide food, clothing, baby essentials and holiday gifts to local families, over 2,600 meals, 7,200 diapers and 650 gift items. They prioritize individuals who have faced significant challenges in life with scholarships, educational and vocational growth. To date, they have awarded over $44,000 in scholarships. The subcommittee looks forward to seeing more from these two amazing groups and the work they will continue to do for our community in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Gitchia. Councillor Robson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank Chairman Gitchia for inviting these two groups in. These are two, I'd say smaller. One is affiliated with one of the larger, obviously, but these are two smaller nonprofit organizations that operate in the community. I think they're doing amazing things and I would highly encourage, if at all possible, Mr. Manager, to possibly even just, if you have some free time, to sit down and see how can the city help them do what they're already doing. Project Compass, for a perfect example, I believe they're pretty much privately funded and they're doing their own thing. They can operate and part of that reason, they said they enjoy a freedom, that they can respond to incidences in blink of an eye because they don't have all the other things that are associated with it. But I mean, if there's any way to maybe sit down and grab a coffee and just see how, if at all possible, can we help them to further their efforts? And then just like the Youth Build, between the culinary and the construction, I know we have kids that are going through the program that have straightened their lives out, got, kind of went off a little bumpy path and got realigned, graduated in their program and they're looking for employment opportunities. So if there's any way that we could point them in the right direction, I think that'd be definitely something that I'd like to see too. So thank you very much.
Councillor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I never realized, but this nonprofit subcommittee is so important. I really did not give it too much thought until I attended and seen, every time there's a meeting, the chairman and the staff, the members, they pick two organizations and we learn that much more about them. Project Compass, I really never heard of them, but the remarkable things that they do each and every day, it's mind-boggling. I just am so impressed. That's why I attend, just to hear when people say, well, there's nothing being done. There's so much being done. And the organizations that are out there, you don't realize all that they do. Youth Build, well, I do them from the Youth Build, well, I knew them from the beginning, but Project Compass, they're just so remarkably amazing. So thank you for putting this Subcommittee together and let me be a part of hearing all the good things that are happening. I can't wait for the next meeting to hear two more groups coming forward. So thank you so much. It's very interesting.
Council, more than that, you're now part of the Subcommittee.
Well, thank you for letting me be on it. Well, I wasn't on it, but I am now. But I mean, I'm very impressed by it. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the Subcommittee. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was exactly going to say that, because every nonprofit Subcommittee meeting, Councilor Mercier is there, and Chairman Getchea said he's going to try to get, and I'm glad that you say it, that Council Mercier now is the fourth member of the nonprofit Subcommittee. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's certification, next week, Council Dakota? All right, great. A motion to accept the reports, the reports of progress, by Council Getchea, second by Council Yem, also fierce, I oppose, motion passes. Also on 6/2, we received a motion to accept and place all the responses on file by Council Janess, and second by Council Noon, also fierce, I oppose, that motion passes. Petitions, 10.1 miscellaneous. Ana Mina de Cruz, request installation of a handicap parking sign, 7th Hill Street. Motion to refer a transportation engineer for a port recommendation by Council Janess, second by Council Dakota, also fierce, I oppose, motion passes. 10.2, National Grid, request installation of underground electric service on Boston Road from Plain Street, 75 feet south. We have a motion to refer a public hearing on January 7, 2025, by Council Robinson, second by Council Scott, also fierce, I oppose, motion passes. Section 11, announcements, any announcements this evening? Council Mercier and Council Dakota?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make note to people that are listening, on Wednesday, December 11, which is tomorrow, we'll have a joint Subcommittee. That'd be Finance and Parks. Those two Subcommittees will meet together right here at 6 o'clock to discuss the capital improvements at Carly Stadium and the report of progress that will take place there. So it'd be tomorrow, 6 o'clock. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just let the viewing public know that we are having our second annual culinary celebration at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium this Thursday. Councilor Mercier will be performing with Booty Vortex, so people who do not, people do not want to miss that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dakota. Mr. Ojus, you got one?
Oh, and it's free, by the way. That's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Tuesday, December 17, from 3 to 6, is the Lowell City Hall Holiday Open House. So we're going to have Santa here to take photos, refreshments, a magician, Lowell Philharmonic Orchestra, and all of the City Hall offices will be open to the public to come and view the decorations.
Great. Thank you very much. Council Robinson?
Thank you. Roberto Clemente League is having a celebration, and they're putting on a nativity play. That's December 14 at the Fusion Church, 4 to 8 p.m., food, drinks, live music, raffles. And I believe they're looking to raise funds towards helping members of the community that might need it. And so, again, there's a music DJ, that's December 14, this coming Saturday, 4 to 8 p.m., nativity play, Christmas party, food, drink, live music, and raffles at the Fusion Church, 125 Mount Hope Street, Lowell, Mass. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Council Mercier, second by Council Janess. Good evening.